Yeah, Jeff's Jeff and David, I think they're online.
Yeah.
All right, I hit record Howard, we're now recording.
Okay. Welcome, everybody. Get the frog out of my throat. I can, I can try and log in there. Yeah, Tim's, Tim's recording, Tim's recording the meeting, so. But I, I don't think that we have any presentations that we have to put up there tonight. So.
I just listen on yours if you're up, if you have them up.
I'll just turn the volume up. Okay, welcome, everybody. I'll call the meeting to order. First order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Yeah, it's, I could, I could link anything. Okay, uh, the next order of business is roll call. Roll, David Olson?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Jeff Redmond?
Here.
Scott DeGros.
Here.
Howard Kurski is here. Dan Cole. Ryan Koffel. Kirk, let's set.
Here.
Okay. Did I miss anybody? Okay, all members are present? Was the meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was, and this meeting is being recorded.
Okay. Okay, at this point, I don't, I don't foresee, do we have anybody online that has public comment? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is our highlight on youth. Teaching from home, uh, presentation, uh, by our elementary staff. So. We'll turn that over.
Yeah. Yep, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so on behalf of the elementary staff, I will be speaking, so I am going to share my screen with you. And if someone can just let me know that when you can see it.
It should be on the top.
Yep. Good sit now, Shelley.
Thank you. All right, wonderful. All right, so, um, on behalf of our entire admin team, we'd just like to thank our entire staff, um, at the elementary school, the middle school, the high school, and our virtual academy, for all they've been doing to help our students and our families be successful with learning at home. So, this is for them. Um, really, it's also a highlight on our youth tonight, um, so I'd like to just take a few minutes tonight to provide you an opportunity to just see what the elementary staff, students, and families are doing to continue learning from home this year. Um, as you can imagine, it's not an easy feat, um, and everyone's doing their best, and so just tonight, want to highlight some of those things. So, here, I, I just want to make sure that, um, we understand, um, the difference between quarantine versus at-home learning. Um, so, to begin the school year, um, in each of our buildings, we have had many students and some staff who have been quarantined at home, which means they were potentially first close contact to someone with COVID-19 and were not able to attend school. So, from the get-go this summer, when we met, you know, with the school board many, many times, we committed to making sure that we continue the learning for our students at home, even if they couldn't be, um, at school in person. Um, so with that, you have to remember what a, a big, um, responsibility that was for our teaching staff, because they had to do both. They had to be teaching in the classroom and also teaching those students that were at home. So I just want to show you a couple of different ways at the elementary school, how we provided that opportunity for these kids. This is, um, we, we gave the option to the staff, um, to determine whether or not they wanted it to be a pre-recorded lesson, and they would email that out, and/or we gave the option to students to log in live with our new doc cams. We have that capability in our classrooms now. So here are just two different ways, the pre-recorded lesson. Um, here's a second grade teacher, Ms. Evans, um, teaching to one of her students who is on quarantine. And I won't play everything, um, but just wanted to have you see a snippet.
Okay, let's see if I can get it on the screen.
Hi, Annie, we're back for reading today on this lovely Tuesday, and I brought one of my favorite books for us to read today, and that is Katie Wu Has the Food. Now, sometimes I forget what I'm reading, so I have to go back or I get so frustrated because I forgot. Today, we're gonna stop and jot down some of our, some of our ideas so we can remember them. I am gonna give you some sticky notes to use, so you can stop and jot down some of your ideas. Let's try it together. Here we go. "Ah, choo!" said Katie Wu. "Bless you," said her mom. "Ah, choo!" Katie sneezed again and again and again. I'm gonna stop after just that one page, and I'm gonna think, hmm, what's happening? Katie's sneezing, that's what's happening. So I'm gonna take my sticky notes there green, and I'm gonna write down Katie's sneezing.
All right, I'm gonna stop there just for the sake of time, um, but you can see that Ms. Evans has a lot of excitement and energy even from teaching, um, in the classroom to a camera, knowing that her little one is on the other side. Um, here is a live lesson, um, from a fourth grade teacher, Ms. Mrs. Gillis, um, where she was able to just set up her doc cam. Our IT department has been, uh, fantastic to be able to help us this year, um, with all of our new devices and helping train our teaching staff. Um, so here is the live lesson where Kelsey was able to just hit start, and, um, the, the, the students, two students actually, were on the other end of this.
All right, so, fourth graders, today for reading, we are going to go ahead and start our non-fiction unit. So, um, you had some chances yesterday to, um, sign your book packs and get some new non-fiction texts. So it's really important that during our non-fiction unit, that we are practicing reading with non-fiction books. Okay? So, I'm gonna ask you, what types of non-fiction do we read every day? And I want you to think outside of just books. So when we think of our day, in the morning, we come to school, what kinds of informational or non-fiction texts do we read just throughout our day? Carter?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a book, though. Okay, I'm thinking outside of just books. Because non-fiction really is, non-fiction really is everywhere around us, we just need to open our eyes to it. So, Evan?
Reading the newspaper?
Okay, yeah, so we see newspapers. What other types of non-fiction do we read each day? Julia? Okay, yeah, definitely. So some finds that you see maybe posted while you're driving, perhaps? Okay, good. Are there things on the news, um, that you also read, not listen to? Yeah, like the little scrawly things along the bottom? But, yeah. What do you mean by? Yeah.
Okay, so for, again, for the sake of time, I'll end there. Um, but those are just two of the ways that we have really helped our kids who were quarantined prior to our full at-home learning these last two weeks. So, do you have any questions about, um, those pieces and being quarantined at home, and how we're providing, um, learning to continue for those students?
No questions?
Okay, um, I'm gonna continue, um, just this next little few examples is, now that we have, unfortunately, um, but, uh, we know it's for the right reasons at this time, have moved to at-home learning. So this means that our entire either grade level, or, well, could start smaller, a grade, a class to a grade level to our entire school goes to at-home learning. So I'm just gonna share with you, um, the elementary has worked very, very hard. Um, actually, it started back in August, and, um, again, I'm just speaking for the elementary. I know the middle school and the high school have done the same thing. Um, back in August, we started really hard working on what would our virtual or our at-home learning plans look like this year? What did we learn from the spring? Uh, what worked, what didn't work, what can we do better? Uh, we gave a survey to the parents to see how could we help them better, um, what were some things? And so, we feel that, um, we had very good plans in place, we've worked hard. Um, we felt we were ready. When it comes, it always comes so fast, so would we have liked more time? Yes, we would have, um, but I just cannot begin to tell you how many emails, um, and positive reports we are getting from families, uh, this time around, just the first weekend. And so, um, this is what we did, is we made a chart for teacher expectations, family expectations, and student expectations, um, if we went at-home learning. And so these are just a couple of the things that, um, you would see there. So, every daily schedule, um, there's a daily schedule that will hap, that happens in every single classroom this time around for at-home learning. This is an example of a third grade classroom, um, but it is general speaking to the entire school. Every single student logs in for a morning meeting, um, and that is the whole entire classroom together, so that they're able to see each other, do some community building. The teacher goes over the class or the schedule for the day, the expectations of the day, um, takes attendance, and then also, um, goes over, um, you know, might, might play a game or does a share or something to allow kids to at least interact with each other still. Uh, we staggered those morning meeting times to accommodate for families that perhaps only have maybe one device in the home, or when you get, you know, two or three people on the internet, it starts to slow down. And so that was, um, some of the feedback we got from last spring. So we start at eight-thirty with kindergarten, go nine o'clock with first grade, and, and so forth and so on. So this is third grade, they log in at ten o'clock for morning meeting, and then every single teacher has small groups throughout the day. And, um, they're meeting with, you know, three to four different small groups, because every single student in the classroom is expected to be met with for every subject once a week. Um, and when, when we're talking at the elementary level about subjects, we're talking reading, phonics, writing, and math. Um, and then we integrate our science and our social studies, um, and we also embed specials into, um, different parts of their day. We do continue, as you can see, we continue with our interventions or our win time at home. These are students who potentially need, um, more reteaching. Um, so that is happening for tier two and tier three. Um, so that's just what a gist of that, um, schedule would look like. And then every classroom teacher is responsible for recording mini lessons for each one of those subjects I listed before. Um, and, and then the, the student is to watch those lessons before they come to their small group. So, just gonna show you, um, what perhaps one of these video-recorded lessons could look like.
Hi, today we're gonna, um, talk about main idea and details, and how to find those when we're reading our non-fiction text. And just a reminder that a main idea is what the text is mainly about, and it's sometimes stated, a lot of times the first sentence in a paragraph, or it's implied, meaning that we just summarize it from all of the information given in the text. So we can look at the pictures and the text to help you find the main idea. Then, the rest, um, of the information are really just what we call details, and those details support and prove that main idea. So, let's look at what we've all been using to help us think about main idea and detail. So, in your classroom.
Okay, so that, that's just kind of a little snippet. Um, I also have a, um, interactive morning meeting from kindergarten and an interactive small group, um, example, and this just shows you, um, how the kids are engaging, um, during a morning meeting, and also how hard our staff work to engage students virtually when you're five and six. Um, Mrs. Gessler was kind enough to share this with me, even though she probably didn't really want to. So I'm gonna forward it ahead.
Um, which will be fun to explore, different things around your house you're gonna measure, and you're gonna use, um, a popsicle stick or a pencil. Um, you don't necessarily have to use a ruler, we're gonna use different things to measure things around the house and compare. And you have science today, so don't forget to check out Mrs. Benzer's Google Classroom, okay? And see what she has in store for you. All right, kindergartners, you can stay muted, or you can unmute, and we're gonna stand up and look at the flag and say our pledge this morning, okay? Right there, okay? Don't forget to put your right hand over your heart.
Wait, is this my right hand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I hope you can hear that audio like I can, because it just melts your heart. Um, last but not least, just want to share, um, what a small group might look like, um, from. This means that we have three or four students together with a teacher. And let's see if it comes up for us.
Actually started recording, yay! Actually started recording, yay, we're famous!
All right, right now. Okay, so, did you guys look at Mr. Nielsen's video this morning about, uh, the writing assignment? Tell us if you have.
I, I didn't see it. Wait, is there a table of contents on?
The table of contents and the glossary. Okay, nicely done. Okay, so that's our assignment today. So we need to, we're gonna go over doing your table of contents and going over how to do your glossary.
I thought you'd be able to see the end product, maybe it's gonna take too long. Um, and anyway, he goes over their examples, and everything is used through Google Classroom. Let's see.
He has what they eat. Then he has how long they live. Next, he has where they live. Okay, what, he's missing one thing. What is he missing? Anna?
A glossary.
Okay, so, yep, right there, Dakota Rigware here. The cursor is.
All right, and last but not least, I just wanted to show you a couple of our, our photos here and leave you with, um, the love that we're seeing on the other side of these screens every day. Um, and although we would love to be in person, um, with these little beings, we're still doing great things, um, from, um, from the other side of the computer. Um, these kids are so engaged, and like I said, I, I shared with the staff this morning a slew of emails that we have gotten from, um, the parents and families just commenting on, um, and just showing their appreciation really for, um, everything that they've done. So, again, just a huge shout-out to our staff, our students, and our families for, um, what we're going through and just how, how we're making it work. So, um, any questions that anyone might have?
Okay, are there any questions for Shelley?
I just have a comment. Shelley, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Shelley, I just, I just have a general comment from a parent perspective, big picture, which is, there was not a lot of assistance with Google Classroom and Google Meet, and I know that you guys live in the Google world, but I imagine there's a lot of parents that don't, and so, you know, when it said, when the email just says, "Go to Google Classroom," I have no idea what that is or where it is or where to find it. You know, that just kind of big picture. I've never been in there, I've never navigated, and I don't know anything about it, and there was not a lot of instruction in that. I mean, I eventually figured it all out, but, you know, just, if you have to go to another, another class or another school where that happens, it may be worth putting some time in to put together an instruction sheet, you know, really dumbed down what it is, how it is.
Yes, I appreciate that. That's Scotty. Oh, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right, um, yes, thank you so much for that, um, I appreciate that, and that has probably been the hardest, um, hurdle we've had to go through, obviously, is technology. Um, and so when I, when we originally first sent out the plan, um, to our families, maybe you didn't see this, and, and this is why I'd like to know how I can better communicate this. Um, in that email that I sent out to all parents, um, there was a video that you, I, I linked it where you can watch, um, the IT department made a video for parents on how to get into Google Classroom, and then I also linked a cheat sheet that went with it, um, to be able to access Google Classroom. And again, there's just so many emails and things coming and going, and I'm sure it's so hard for parents to do that. I don't know if there's a better way to do that or a better platform to do that in. Um, so if you guys have any suggestions, we'd be happy to hear that, um, and perhaps maybe try them that way, too.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
Shelley, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you just give us the quick thirty-second rundown of who's where as of tomorrow, 4K in class, kindergarten, in school, et cetera?
Yes, 4K through four at this time. Correct. For 4K, four. Fifth is out, and then eighth grade came back today, so seven through twelve are in seat.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions for Shelley?
All right. Yeah, thank you for your time.
Okay. Okay, then, then we will move on to the next item on the agenda.
Okay, then we will move on.
I gotta turn my video off. Hopefully, I can cut down on that.
Maybe unplug your HDMI, we don't.
Okay. I think I screwed up on my computer, too, so. I think so. And I can't get all of it, so.
We're, we're locked up for a second. Can you hear Jeff? Can you nod if he can hear?
I can hear you.
So. Here again, finally.
Locked up, so just give us a second.
Okay, people can hear me now?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. Um, I'll move on to the next item, is comments from, uh, board members and superintendent, uh, starting with registration for the, uh, 2021, uh, Virtual WASB Convention. I believe everybody here should have gotten a note by their, uh, desk, but go over it here, quick. Registration fee, uh, information is there, we have, uh, group rebates. There, we can, uh, join up to the day of the conference. And, uh, if you're interested, get ahold of, uh, Pam, she can get you registered. It's $240 a person. We have more than five, uh, they'll give us a 10% rebate. If we get more than nine, then there's a 15% rebate. Also, uh, cancellations up to January 8th. So if anybody is, uh, interested in that, please get ahold of Pam, uh, soon as possible. Uh, that will, uh, WASB, enough time to get the information that you will need to log into the, uh, virtual session, so. If anybody's interested in that, uh, go ahead, get ahold of Pam, and, uh, we can get registered, so. I don't know how many are interested at this point. Hearing none, we'll, uh, move on. Any other comments from, uh, board members on any other, uh, items? Any other comments from uh board members on any other items we need to address? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we don't have any scheduled presentation from uh staff or guests tonight, so we'll move on to our treasures report.
We're gonna get feedback when I read it, so.
Okay, I'll mute myself.
Bank account balances as of 10:31 2020. Citizens State Checking, 855,345.87. Citizens State Bank Money Market, 1,014,2372. Citizens Money Market Fund, 46, 53.4 cents. Citizens Money Market Suicide Prevention Fund, 19,169.32 cents. Per total bank account balances of 1,886,991.95.
Move to accept by David.
Okay, I have a motion, David Olson, to accept the treasures report as presented.
Second.
Second, Brian Koffel. Okay, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the next item, which is our consent agenda, which consists of our meeting minutes from our October 19 meeting, meeting minutes from our November 2 meeting, approval of the bi-monthly bills for November uh 2020. Approval of uh curricular modifications for students to enroll in full-time and part-time virtual ed courses, of which we have three full-time students. And that should be it for the agenda at this time. Uh, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? Yeah, motion Kirk, is there a second? Second, David?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next item on the agenda is our student enrollment update.
Uh, the number of students in seats remains at 1,478, just like it was this past month. Um, two numbers of note in our virtual in district, uh, full-time students went from 174 to 178. And um also in our virtual charter school, open enrolled students in went from 264 uh last month to 277. Those are really the only noteworthy uh things on this month's report. Again, want to thank the ladies um for all their diligence and effort in putting this together each month. So thank you.
Okay, any questions with regards to student enrollment? Okay, thank you for that, Tim, and we'll move on to the next item. Uh, four-day school week uh update.
Uh, nothing real noteworthy, other than to say it's been a smashing success for our staff, much appreciated, very productive Fridays. We've had three of them now. Um, so again, uh, just nothing but positive things to report. And a thank you from the staff um to the school board and uh for those days, they're very productive.
Okay. Have we had any issues uh with sanitation or anything like that with the COVID stuff going around?
Um, how so?
Uh, we've been able to get to the spaces and in the schools, get them disinfected on a timely basis?
Um, yes, we have. Really, um, yep.
Is there anything we need in addition to what we have right now for that?
I'll um defer to Greg Green on that.
Okay.
Greg's on the call.
Yeah, we've been doing, we've been spraying everything every day where the kids are in session, and we're spraying every other day, every third day, still in the areas at the elementary where the kids are not right now. It's still an ongoing thing every day. We have plenty of supplies and uh um continue to do what we should.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions with regards to the four-day school week? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is our student staff and community recognition. Brian, I'll turn it over to you. No, turn your mic on. I'll turn mine off.
All right. Okay, I just have the feedback in my ear. Okay, Sammy Ranwell, recognition. Great job, Sammy. Sammy was chosen as a 2020 teen Miss Masquerade Twin Cities Title Award winner. Kelly Heinbach, um, or Celia Heinbach? Celia completed at the, sorry, wrong, the one, the other ones on my basketball team for fourth grade. So that's my bad there. Um, Celia competed at the World Horse Show Championship. It came home with many world championships. Haley Dingman, Lydia Hubbard, Kelly Kirk, Turka, Kirka, Harper Dumond, and Lydia Kosky, recognition. These outstanding musicians participated in the Wisconsin State Honor Choir this weekend. Typically would take place in Madison, be broadcast on the radio, but this year will take place digitally. Great job to these musicians. Sally Vagnus, Sidney Burgess, Jenna, was it Wyhausen? Weehausen? Weehausen, Sarah McHenry, Jill Holm, Janessa Olson, and coaches Logan Kimberly, Dan Rudd, Luke Ritchie, and the entire golf, girls golf program. Congratulations to all of you on a tremendous season culminating in a fourth-place finish at the state tournament. Sally Vagnus, Vagnusness, uh, great job in your incredible season finishing with an individual fifth place at the state tournament for golf. Cougar Holder and Jacob Egan, great job on your performance at the cross-country state meet. Maya Kaiser, Caitlin Carson, Carlson, Sidney Rochelle, Sidney Carlson, Ellie Smith, Anna Sauer, Libby Collins, and coaches Bill Emery and Kristen Bosniler. Congratulations on your tremendous season and accomplishments qualifying for the state cross-country meet and placing sixth. Two pages today, so everybody, good job on turning these in. You must like listening to me talk. Sally Vagnus, Jenna Wyhausen, Sidney Burgess, Sarah McHenry, and Jill Holm, congratulations on your accomplishment in being recognized as academic all-state honorees. Brady O'Brien and Madeline Ford, amazing job in being selected into and performance with the high school state honors choir. Ronald Kane, thank you for your years of service in the military, and thank you for your passionate and wonderful speech as part of the middle school Veterans Day virtual program. Gavin Hawkins and Delaney Parrott. Gavin won first place and Delaney won second in this year's VFW Patriots pen essay contest. The theme this year is what is patriotism to me? Great work. Thanks again for everyone who submitted those.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, uh, for the submissions, and congratulations to all those that we recognize. Great work. Okay, moving on to the next item. Uh, we had discussion of the future needs and priorities of the uh district. We had a staff meeting last Friday to discuss with the staff uh district needs and followed up with a second uh community meeting tonight. Uh, any comments uh from you, Tim, on that?
Um, no, just um, just acknowledge that we ran a little short on time and and um Joe, Joe did send me a text saying, got a lot of good feedback on those forums, so um, but just to be cognizant of that next time as we plan for the next meeting, make sure we allow. We had a lot to report on, which obviously is important, too. But um we'll see how it goes. Uh, Joe and I will synthesize that data and start planning for the next meeting.
Okay, one of the concerns that we had here earlier was uh not enough time for the groups to discuss the issues. And I know it seemed like we were uh drowning in information and reports tonight and not enough time to discuss it. Do we feel necessary at this time that we need to get another meeting set up for further discussion? Sure, reports and more discussion.
I don't think so. I think we gave everybody fair opportunity to submit more, and we'll get the reports. And we've encouraged people to throw things out there. So I don't think, I think we should stick to the schedule that we have.
Okay, anybody else? Any?
I agree with Jeff.
Okay.
I, eight, eight minutes felt late. Um, but but maybe the submission was great. I didn't see all of the feedback, so maybe they'll come back with money.
Yeah, I agree that the eight minutes wasn't enough, but the idea that they can submit for, and the next meeting is in four weeks, they can. Send us information. And we should send out solicitation of that again to that whole group.
Okay.
Keep sending comments as you think of them.
Okay. Any other opinions? Otherwise, I think it went well tonight. Uh, we had, I think, about 40 participants again, from what I could see. So pretty good opportunity. Uh, so hopefully, we can get a good balance across the community and uh get a good uh read as to feelings of the community. So. Any other comments? Okay, then we'll move on. Uh, next is consideration of approval of the revisions of the 2020-2021 school calendar. I know one of the things that we looked at uh last month was switching the dates on the 4th of January instead of uh coming back on the 5th, come back on the 4th, and then uh hold Martin Luther King Day as a official holiday as we have in the past. So I think those are the only changes that were made. Am I correct in that, Tim?
Yeah, and the administration team met after the last board meeting and um are asking you to reconsider uh the Martin Luther King Junior Day um and for the following reasons. Um, I misspoke when I said we, I think somebody asked, have we always taken that off? Uh, that's not accurate. We have not always. It's been a mix. Um, our biggest concern is just a three-day week and really throwing off the the schedule for the families um any more than we have to. We prefer to just keep that Friday off only and be in school on Monday. Um, and you know, we would argue, I understand the political correctness and um the cultural significance of the day. Um, but I, you know, we we would argue, we could probably be more effective educationally with um in-person, talking about Martin Luther King Junior and the significance he made on civil rights movement if we're in person. So for those two reasons, we're just asking you to reconsider um us being in school on the 18th.
So we thought that would be more effective to do that. Why did we have it off originally on the calendar?
I think we did, then we didn't. And then we put it back on off, if I remember correctly. I think because we had it off last year, we just kind of copied it and brought it over. But that was before we switched to the um no student days on Fridays.
So I just want to say, so the, so the request is to go in that Friday and take off, go in that Monday and take off that Friday?
Correct. Be in, be in school on the 18th and not be in school on the 22nd. And we're okay keeping um Monday, the 4th, uh, starting back to school rather than having that off. Again, we are realizing every day that we can have kids in person is a win and precious. So we advocate for for coming back on the 4th.
So that you took, because that was a change, right? So now it is, you're, you're coming back on the Monday and not Tuesday?
Correct. And then, you know, the one Friday we are going to be in session is January 8th because of the second Friday, Student Count Day.
Okay, so that first week then is going to be five days instead of four?
Correct.
And the rest of them will be four-day weeks?
That's what we propose, yes.
Okay.
And the request is that Monday be an in-person day, but then there not be another day off somewhere else. Is that right?
Yeah, originally, we had the 4th off and came back on the 5th. Um, so now we want to be back in on the 4th and the 18th. Yeah.
Good questions or discussion on the school calendar? A proposal?
I'm comfortable deferring to admin on this, and I agree that more school days is better. We're already whacking off 20% of our school days. So I'm okay with the request uh in the recommended calendar.
Yeah, in perfect world, we'd have that day off, but clearly, we're not quite in a perfect world, so I won't give the, have been pretty good.
Yeah, I'm fine with it, too.
Okay, from others?
Need a motion?
Yes.
Some.
There are a motion, Jeff, second. Scott, to amend the calendar to include starting Fridays off, with the exception of the week of January 4th, in which both Monday and Friday will be in school, and we will have a school day on the 18th of January. Any further discussion? Okay, those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, did we get that? Reported?
Yes.
Okay. We have one opposed, so.
Um.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay.
Okay. With that, we will move on to the next item, which is consideration of approval of short-term borrowing. So do we have Jen on the line?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so this, as you remember, probably about five years ago, we ended up borrowing in November. Um, what's happening again this year is that our first payroll in December is on the 4th, and we will not receive our large state aid payment until December 7th. So we have a few days there where we need to cover that payroll. Um, we'll be borrowing the full 600,000, and it should be for just a matter of those few days over that weekend. So we'll probably get the money on the 3rd so that we have it in our account, so we can go ahead and process that payroll, and then we'll repay it right away on the 7th. The bank has given us a 3.5% interest rate again this year, which is what we have had the last several years with them.
So we're talking probably a couple of hundred dollars interest at most?
Yeah, I would say $250 tops.
I make a motion to approve the short-term borrowing as described. This is David.
Okay, I had a motion from Deanne first, so.
Second.
Okay, David seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to the next item, is consideration of the second reading of board policy, 345.52 with regards to academic letters. Okay. With that, uh, do we have any comments from Kirk?
Sure. Uh, thank you hard. The board had asked about some data. Sure, uh, the thank you hard. The board had asked about some data regarding how what percentage of students were earning the academic letter for the year. Um, based on the current model, which is three point three-three GPA or better. I would. Prefer to the board to that document um, of information that I gathered. Uh, it's looking at the the first table. Uh, school year two thousand twenty, ninth graders, that's last year, which are currently sophomores. You can see eighty-one percent of those students were three point three-three or better. Uh, and um, you can just work backwards from there. Um, that's a, that's higher than any of the other ones and really speaks to um. As we move towards standards-based grading and pushing all kids up. Um, and dealing with academic concerns, or excuse me, academic performance on one side and behavioral concerns separate from that. Um, we're seeing grades drive up and uh. It becomes when you're giving out a letter to eighty-one percent of your students, that certainly you could argue that's a celebration. I personally think it waters down the value of that. Um, so if you look at the second table under uh, number two. Sixty percent of our, that number goes from eighty-one percent of the students to sixty percent. Uh, the students would have earned uh, an academic letter if we were at a three point six-seven. That's information the board directly asked for. Uh, again, sixty percent is um, is is not a low number by any means. Um, but it's, I think it's, it's certainly um, still fair and still honors. Well, obviously over a majority of your kids in that class, which is um, that's a lot of, that's a lot of of kids. But uh. So basically, um, that's the data uh, that you can, you can see how that lays out. Um, and I think when you look at the the proposed academic letters, three point six-seven to four, you see our percentages are still. Um, are still significant in terms of number of students or percentage of students earning that, who would earn that award. But it does give it more, um, it's not as watered down as it would be with that, with the current model. And recommendation then would be that we, beginning with the class of two thousand twenty-three, our current sophomores, that we. Um, require them to get a three point six-seven or better to earn an academic letter for that school year.
Okay. Okay. With that, and it's a discussion that continues from uh, the first reading. Uh, what's the board's feeling?
So Kirk, would you say that this change starts at the next school, beginning of the next school year or next semester? We have to now or the change? Now?
Initially, we had thought we would start it with the class of two thousand twenty-four, which would be this year's freshman. However. Uh, looking at the class of two thousand twenty-three's percentage at eighty-one percent last year. We, since we have not awarded academic letters for this year, for last year yet, um, we were deciding what to do with the past failed second semester. Um, this group of current sophomores at the class of two thousand twenty-three is not, they have not been part of the academic letter system. So to them, it, they won't recognize any difference. Um, and yet we'd still be awarding sixty percent of them uh, with an academic letter. That's which is still a healthy percentage. So. Recommendation is that starting uh, the class of two thousand twenty-three. Um, and so our current sophomores and current freshmen would fall on the three point six-seven expectation.
Okay, that's bumping that level from a B-plus at average to an A-minus?
Yeah, it's a, uh, that a three-six-seven is a solid A.
Yeah, my question is, are we changing the rules on them during a year?
Well, that's a fair question and my logic behind this is that we're not. Because they haven't, they haven't received, nor do I think they're even aware of the lettering system last year. We don't. The lettering system is not something that we promote. Um, it just kind of has been a traditional thing. I would be surprised if they're even aware of of that. Uh, we have had. I don't know if we've had any students come and ask if they're going to get letters from last year. Uh, we have had a couple of parents email just saying, hey, do you know when that's going to happen? So. From that standpoint, I don't think they're even aware of it. It's not like they've been in the system and received a letter. Um, and so I, for that reason, I I don't see it as a, as an issue.
So in the same school, we'll have two different standards though? So the juniors and seniors would be on. One and freshman sophomore would be on another?
Right, so I mean, that's just a natural transition. I think it's, I think it's, it would be unfair to switch it on the juniors and seniors. Um, and so, yeah, there will be two different uh, systems for the next couple of years.
Okay. Feelings from the board?
I guess I feel like it, but I'm not going to repeat one.
Okay.
I I didn't hear that. Oh, and I don't know if that was a question or.
Nah, it's a statement in the boardroom here.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, the average for twelfth grade is forty-four percent. The average for the eleventh grade is forty-eight percent. The average for tenth grade is fifty-five percent and the average for ninth grade is sixty-five percent. So by the time they become seniors, it's only forty-four percent. Just. For statistical analysis.
Okay. Okay, so we have this uh, policy before us and the recommendation in the policy is to increase. The award from a minimum of three point three-three to three point six-seven. In the policy. For the class of two thousand twenty-three.
I again would defer to Kirk and his uh, judgment and would make the motion to approve the policy.
I'd second that.
Okay, I have a motion Jeff, second. Uh, David, to accept the policy as amended? Any further discussion?
Do we recognize these groups publicly at all? When they receive their letter, do they get recognized in any form or fashion?
I thought they right, recognize them. They recognize them in the high school and uh, newsletters and uh.
The only reason I'm asking that is that you're going to have two grades recognized for something completely different than two other grades of the whole school. If we're recognizing publicly. When I get at the end, all of that stuff, I understand.
Yeah.
I just.
Well, it's, it's, it's going to be an issue for a couple of years. We've, we've done, run through the same problem when we increase the number of credits. Uh, required for graduation.
And when we change the grading scale.
So there's no easier good way to do that. But if we are to make the change and our goal is to produce the best students, then uh, we need to recognize that.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I mean, to me, if it's something we should do, we should just do it. Like today, for everybody.
It is change of the rules for kids, the juniors and seniors in the middle of the game.
The thing is too easy. So too easy. I mean, I understand.
Change of rules at the beginning of the season, not the middle of the game.
I understand, and I'm just talking about the spirit of it. But we really believe in the spirit of it. Why would we just change it?
I would, I. If I may, it's um, we, we transitioned into standards-based grading because we knew standards-based grading was the right thing, but. You want to get, you, we just have to be strategic about how we do it. I, I just don't think it'd be fair to cha, I mean, we're, we're easing into this transition away from this. And for away from valedictorian and salutatorian. And I just think it's prudent to to go this route. Respectfully, I would submit that.
And I think any other changes like this that we've had where it affects the large number of students that it does, I, I think we've done a good job in the past of. Trying to feather that in the best we can to make it more palatable to the whole population. Um, rather than just blam, here it is, everything's brand new. Um, you know, I think, I think it is to use a. I hate using the word fair, but it, it, it seems like maybe it's a bit more fair to the group. Um, to kind of split it down the middle and say, okay, you guys have been doing it one way for a few years already. You guys are just starting out. We have to make a cutoff. Somewhere, so um, it just, it, it seems to me kind of phasing it in is a little bit more palatable to everybody.
How many kids are in the high school?
Four hundred and fifty. Okay.
I'm just trying to figure out what the average is if we didn't cut over.
I think the important thing here to also look at is that we look at the percentage of, in the old model, uh, in the new model. Of eighteen to twenty, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, the percentage of kids earning that is going up. And that's a direct reflection of our philosophy of driving and pulling all kids up with reassessments, reteaching. And so it, the percentage is moving up. That means the bar has moved. It's, I think it's okay to. To increase the rigor and adjusting for the number of kids that are. That are driving up higher in their, in their GPAs. I don't see it as cutting kids out. I see it as adjusting, adjusting to what we're seeing.
That feels like a disparate piece of stats to me a little bit.
How so?
Because you, I mean, you don't, I mean, the other people might have done the same base on it, like so. I, I can't gauge if the bar has changed. But that's all I'm saying is that you're, you're changing multiple variables and applying linear statistics to it.
Well, these are the statistics that I have. I don't, I'm not, still not sure what the argument is. Uh, that, we're seeing our percentage from. It was in the, in the old model, it was forty-seven percent in eighteen, sixty-seven percent in nineteen, eighty-one percent in two thousand twenty. I'm not manipulating those stats. More kids by percentage are achieving a three-three. And it's getting to a place where I think we need to adjust the goal line because it's, I mean, eighty percent of your kids earning an academic letter. To me, that, that, that rings, rings true that there needs to be an adjustment.
So might.
A recalibration, I guess.
Like, my comment is around the goal line, whether that's constant or not. That's all.
Okay.
Three-point line in, in basketball, they got good at hitting the three-pointers, they moved the line out.
That is a fact.
Then what? The nineteen-nine. That's the nineteen-nine.
So. Okay. Any other discussion? Otherwise, we have a motion on the floor. Okay, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. You get the uh, no? Recorded? Motion carries. Six-one vote. Okay. Next item on the agenda is consideration. Of the second reading of Board Policy three forty-five fifty-three Academic Honor System Graduation Recognition. Okay. Everybody got a chance uh. To read that policy over? In effect, we're doing away. With valedictorian and salutatorian for the class of two thousand twenty-four and going to highest honors, high honors. Gold cord medal, silver cord medal. Okay, discussion? I don't think anything has changed on this policy from the first time we've read it.
That's correct.
Okay. So with that, I would uh, ask for a motion to approve. Policy three forty-five fifty-three Academic Honors System Graduation Recognition as it stands.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion, David. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Jeff. Any further discussion? Can all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is consideration of, of the second uh, reading of Board Policy. Three forty-five sixty-one with regards to early graduation. Okay, I don't believe anything has changed in this policy from the uh. First reading.
That's correct.
Okay, I have a motion Scott, second Kirk to accept the policy as presented. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next item on the agenda. Is consideration of approval of the second reading of Board Policy three forty-five point six High School Graduation Requirements. Okay. Questions or comments there? Okay, um.
Could someone help me? If there is no link to a current policy, does that mean that current policy doesn't exist? Am I safe to assume that?
I believe so.
Not an identical policy, so sometimes this would replace like parts of the policy because we're aligning to a different structure than it used to be. Sometimes it's just an addition because we choose to or because we're mandated to.
Okay, uh. I think the question that I, I proposed to you last time, Kirk, was the uh, graduation requirement, uh. Course requirements for graduation and that we are toward the bottom of the conference for middle border. And you presented data, I believe, to everybody. Uh, with that.
Yes, in terms of credits, uh, St. Croix Central requires twenty-four credits, fifteen and a half of those are, are your required courses, which is. Uh, on this, on this policy. Um, and then eight and a half additional credits. Um, that's how we compose our twenty-four, comprise our twenty-four. New Richmond is at twenty-three. Uh, they have fewer elective credits, but more required. They require four years of ELA, four years of math and three and a half of science. We require four of ELA, three of math and three of science. Um, so, but New Richmond's at twenty-three, Somerset twenty-four. Uh, so we're even with those two. Um, Prescott moves to twenty-five. They require the same number of credits, excuse me. They have the same number of required credits. Uh, we have, but they have more, more elective credits, one more elective credit than we do. Uh, Osseo is at twenty-five and a half. And then you get into Baldwin's at twenty-seven. Ellsworth at twenty-seven. Amory's at twenty-eight. And River Falls is at thirty. I would mention that in talking to other colleagues, um, particularly even some at River Falls, that the thirty uh, there is, has much to do with a block schedule. Um, and there's even discussion in, within their group of trying to reduce that uh, from thirty down. But. Um, so I, I think the, yeah, you're correct that we're in the, what is it, the bottom third in terms of number of credits required. Uh, I'm not, uh, we also know that, and this is going back a couple of years, that Jeff Fern provided information that probably ninety percent of our seniors. Have uh, the credits they need to graduate in terms of quantity and what they. And what they typically have left is one credit of ELA, uh, left, so. We have a lot of seniors that, um, are able to, uh, get into the workforce and do some of those types of things, more flexibility there. Uh, so I'm, I guess my point is that raising credits isn't necessarily the right answer, but it certainly isn't, I think, something we should take a look at.
What's the consequence if we are to add, it appeared when I, uh, looked at. Graduation requirements from other districts. The, uh, most of the requirements, uh, increases were, uh. Elective credits. And what's the consequence if you require one or two? Extra, uh, elective credits. Uh, as far as, uh, classroom time and staff available.
Well, I think you hit them both, it's, uh, sta- staffing is is a big one, now you're putting more students are gonna are gonna be into in the classrooms, that's. Gonna, uh, potentially require, uh, more staffing, um. And I, you know, I, I think in, I think in essence, it's, that is the biggest, that is the biggest, um. That that's probably the biggest challenge to it. Um. And it's difficult then to predict, unless we did something where we said. You're required to take an additional half credit of science and additional half credit of math and then. Then we know where those kids are gonna be slotted. Uh, I like the flexibility of elective credits, uh, we have, we'd spent time prior to this meeting with our CTE, talking about our CTE. Uh, that is, that's a great program that can certainly expand, but it would require a look at staffing.
Kurt, I would approach it from a different direction. How many kids graduate with twenty four credits only here and how many graduate with twenty five or twenty six or?
Um, I would, I would, without having the exact data, I would say it's, uh, easily over ninety five percent graduate with more than twenty four credits.
So we're doing it without requiring it?
Yeah, that's a fair point, I think, I think as long as, some of those, some of those hidden credits come with. Students not necessarily being in the classroom as well, so they, they earn credits off site, they earn credits through WITC welding program. Though many, many, many different options for them as well outside the building, I think that's a really fair point that you bring up, Scott.
Okay, are there other questions for Kurt?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment, and that is. I think that by keeping our number where is and allowing our students the flexibility of pursuing other interests like taking a class of WITCs. Or taking girl college or something like that allows our kids to have a more flexible approach to what they want to do the rest of their lives.
Okay.
And I would also say that from a parent's point of view. It's punitive to take another class if they wanna get out with twenty more credits because they don't like school, so I think you let them graduate. And let them move on and do the next thing rather than punish them with one more class if that's the kid who feels its punishment.
Scott, that's a fair point, I just had a conversation with a young man yesterday about, about that very thing, and he's looking forward to getting into the workforce. Um, during the second semester, um, because he's gonna early grad. And he's excited about it, and we talk to kids like that. Uh, we've done everything we can to prepare them, he's excited to go move on. And, um, I'm excited for him as well.
Okay.
I made the motion to approve policy as written.
Okay, I have a motion, Scott, second Brian. To accept policy three forty five point six, high school graduation requirements as it is written. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Next. Policy, uh, under consideration is first reading of policy three forty two point six one, school age parent programs. Okay. Questions there on this policy?
So this is one of those where there's not a current policy, so that tells me this is a new policy.
I know, can you comment on that, Kurt?
I I can't, to me, this is a, this is a rubber stamp state driven one, it's, uh. You know, it's associated with one fifteen nine one five and one eighteen one three, I don't think we have much leeway.
Okay. Actually, uh, we are requiring, uh, that student to complete high school.
I thi- I think it gives, it gives some, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're, we're offering, uh, flexibility for the student to become, uh, a high school graduate.
That's exactly it, that's exactly it.
Okay, probably a better way of stating it than the way I was going to originally. So. Questions or comments on this policy?
I just go back to my problem of trying to prepare a reading because I just don't have any context in it, it just says the name of the policy and I have a lens. And I look at it and I'm like, okay, what am I, why am I reading this and? What am I supposed to be looking at? Again, I have nothing to do with this, I just have a hard time. Engaging in what I'm supposed to be doing, so I'm just raising that again, I don't have an answer, so.
The whole process was about. Getting our policy book. Align differently, um, and it's been a four year project and we're just going section by section.
It's been longer than that, Scott.
But I appreciate that, but we're not too, because then there's some that are shown in here that are like changes.
Right, but it's section by section of the way that, that it's, it's the new.
I understand that point, I do.
Basically, what we're doing when we're working at these is. Some of them are so new that they've been modified by that, we're looking to make sure that it makes sense, that there's like thematic errors in it.
But that's what I'm saying, is I need, I need, I need some sort of lens, I need some, I need some. Some direction in what I'm reviewing is on the agenda, that's what I'm asking for.
Okay. Well, you're absolutely fine to call into the, the district office, I've done in the past as well, when the agenda is released, and I'm not really sure on something. I don't hesitate to call in and and talk to Pam or, um, talk to to Tim and and find out exactly what is the situation, why this is here and what we're gonna discuss about it. Just for some clarity beforehand, so, I mean, don't, don't feel like you can't do that, it it certainly can, you can get clarification. Uh, before the meeting if you want, um. You know, maybe get some more understanding or to wrap your head around it, um, and ask questions, I mean, there certainly isn't a concern with that, it's not like it's a. A walking quorum or something to to just give them a holler and ask some questions.
But maybe, maybe what it means is a notation within the agenda, uh, that this is new as required by the state. New as proposed by the district.
Yeah, that would be maybe.
By the state, uh, replaces such as that, so, so you have a reference point of.
Yeah, and I, and, yeah, David's points will take a moment, it's on me maybe just to ask. But I just didn't, you know, I'm in the, I'm, I'm interested in working smarter not harder too, like if I could just glance at it and be like, okay, this is mandated by statute, boom, next one, you know, that's what I'm.
And also, I, if if we're doing that, we could also, and I, I'm not proposing this as a new format of the agenda. But it could be that this language was, uh. WASD language. Or this language came directly from district staff or or something too.
But like, just, I mean, just like, the principal's name is, you know, you don't know, but. What he just said was, well, this is just statutory, so we don't have any legal, well, then great, then if that was in the agenda, I wouldn't have even opened it. So, it's just.
That, it's obviously hard because I read all of these prior. And yet, I look at them through a different lens based on how they're introduced half the time. So like, I could have avoided reading. Half of them prior because I was looking at through the wrong lens, but, and I can call the district office every, wherever needed, for our prior, so it's another option. I have the same thing, like I, I come here and I try to prep and I, you know, prep appropriately. Or maybe I should.
No, you need to prep.
We should probably come up with the, whatever it is, three or four categories of. Is it newer replaced, is it, uh, boilerplate language, is it statutory, statutorily mandated, is it? Uh, you know, those, those things within this document might answer a lot of those questions. This is new because the state passed law, this is. Uh, WASD's.
A lot of.
Legal language lifted direct from the WASD or?
Typically, a lot of their policies are a conglomeration of numerous other district policies. And they'll, they'll consolidate it into a recommended policy. Every policy they adopt though doesn't necessarily mean it's a policy that we have to adopt.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna belabor the point, it just frustrates me every meeting, so that's why. You're having to listen to my frustration, I would call that.
We can't, we can't fix it if we don't alter it at the end, so. Frustration, uh, makes us better, so. We need to clarify that, get it clarified for you. So.
I would say a couple hours before meeting as well, I literally go up to the. Policies, try to crop reference, and I'm not very successful most of the time, but I look, I've read a lot of the policy now.
Uh, there's, there's a lot of them and a lot of the old ones, uh, there's a lot of holes in them and they're probably not as detailed as they need to be.
There's some of the old ones that we've updated or still on there, I've noticed, they're not completely, there's a little like. Which is understandable.
Well, we try to, we, once we get them adopted, we try and eliminate the old ones as soon as possible. But sometimes the website doesn't necessarily keep up. So. Okay, with this policy. Are there any changes that, uh, need to be made as, as it's, uh, presented?
No.
Okay, any other comments from board members? Okay, then it will stand approved as the first reading, we'll bring it back, uh. In our December meeting, uh, for final approval. Okay, the next. Policy. Is consideration of the first reading of board policy four twenty two point one, admission of foreign exchange student, uh, exchange program students. Okay. Questions or comments with regards to this policy?
Well, this one's been near and dear to me, so I'm gonna have one comment on it. No more than four full-time high school foreign exchange students. I would add in the language from, uh. The rating policy or the credits policy, at the discretion of the high school principal, exceptions can be made. I would add that in. When we took our first two exchange students, it was mid-year and they became the fourth and fifth in the district, then we would have been in violation of the policy. The principal made the exception. On the fly, but we might as well build in the safeguard if we can.
Scott, in its first sentence of the second paragraph, does it say what you want it to say?
No.
Oh, it says, it says no more, yeah, okay.
Well, if you add, at, at the discretion of the high school principal, exceptions can be made, which is, is language of the credit policy.
Yep.
Graduation, I think that fixes my concern about it.
Sure.
Okay.
So I'm having a bit of a hard time hearing Scott, so can one of you just speak to his, so it's recorded in the meeting minutes, so Pam and I can get it?
Yeah, the, uh. Scott's concern is that the policy. Uh, states that, uh. There will be, uh. It says that, uh. St. Croix Central School District authorizes building principal in consultation with the district administrator to admit no more than four, four full-time. Uh, high school foreign exchange students during one, an academic year. And Scott's proposal is adding the language similar to the, uh. Graduation credit. Uh, you wanna state that exactly?
So in the graduation credits, there's a full sentence that says at the discretion of the district administrator, the high school principal, exceptions can be made. I would make it at the discretion of the high school principal.
Okay, do we, do we even need that language? I know Kurt and I discussed it briefly, I, I questioned that too, do we need to limit it to four?
If you're.
Yes.
Well. I think you want policy in there that says what your, what your theoretical limit is, at least that was per Glenn Webb. As there was some real reasons why four was a, a threshold number for Glenn, Kurt probably has the same reasons.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good safeguard sentence, it gives us, there could be some fairly aggressive. Hosts that want more kids and it gives us something to say, you know, we really, four is our limit. Um, four seems to be about the right spot in terms of number of kids. Um, but I do really like the idea to be able to consult with Tim and make that exception if we, if we feel it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a good choice for our district.
Okay.
Okay, got it, I could hear, I could hear your suggestion well, so it's recorded and we'll, we'll put that in the revisions for second reading.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, is there any other, uh, things we need to note in this policy? Okay. I guess a question that I would have curiosity more than anything else. On these foreign exchange students, how many of them have already completed a, a high school diploma before they, uh, apply to, uh, attend our high school?
I, a very low, a very low number, we try to avoid the kids that are already graduated from their school. Uh, that can bring in some, some social issues that, and not for every kid, but it, you know, they're in more moving towards the adult world than what. Than what we need, and, um, typically they're younger than that, they're sixteen or seventeen is our typical.
Okay, I know there's some.
Some of them, it, it depends on what country they come from as well, I know, you know, if you're talking, let's say, just specifically Europe, there are some European countries where they consider. Um, secondary education to be done at the age of sixteen, so it really depends on where they're coming from.
Yeah. I'm rusty on those rules. They used to be sixteen when I remember it. Okay. So is there any other discussion on this policy? Okay. Okay, then this, uh. This will be considered the first reading of this policy. With the noted changes. We'll bring it back to the next meeting in December for final approval. Okay, um. We'll, uh, handle these individually, uh. First. Policy consideration of approval of eliminating board policy, uh, four hundred dot one nine five regarding, uh, regarding academic letters. That policy is to be replaced by the one just adopted three forty five point five two.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Kirk second. David, to approve the elimination of policy 400.195.
Can I make like an, what is that called, like an omnibus motion to just include all of them? Okay.
Okay. With that, we have a motion to second. All those, any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item is 400.214, high school diploma cert and certificate in special classes. We have a motion, Scott second. Deanne, to approve elimination of policy 400.214. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item is 400.220 regarding high school participation, or graduation participation. We have a motion, Kirk second. Scott, to approve the elimination of policy 400.220. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, other business. Okay. One of the things I neglected to cover last meeting was I think everybody received a note from the district, deadline for incumbent members with, with tax years, starting on January 1st have the right to refuse their salary. If so, you need to send in written notification to the district for that, and they will be noted with the district clerk and the district treasurer that the member wishes not to accept their salary. So, been duly notified. Is there any other business we have to cover at this time?
I have a question, I just, I didn't know that fifth grade, you had, did they all get all out? I just hadn't heard that.
Those were second, so they were out last weekend or this week?
Yes.
And the eighth grade was, or just two weeks, now they're back.
And was, was fifth grade the same as, or did the teachers have changed or?
I thought that was instructors as well. I mean, that's.
The shortage, the shortage.
Because you had, you had eighth grade, teachers were something for seventh grade and other grades. Sixth grade, I think, was just helping prevent that from occurring in the house.
Okay. Did you hear that discussion, Tim?
No, just something about eighth grade, that's all I caught.
Yeah, they're, we're trying to get a handle on, on which grades are out and why they're out. Is it, is it because of staff shortages or student outbreak?
Staff, staffing shortages in close contacts. Yeah, it's a little bit, a little bit of both, but the tipping point was the staff shortages for, for the eighth grade and then the fifth grade and then the elementary. I think the last number, the tipping point was staff member number 17 was out, out of 51, so a third of the elementary staff were out for various reasons, not just a close contact, but also the fifth grade or the eighth grade, I'm sorry, the fifth grade group, you know, some parents had to stay home and had daycare issues, so it was kind of a compounding thing. But everybody did their darndest to try and stay open, and it was just a few tipping points that made the decision for, for us.
How, how are we feeling about staying open? Just, you know, hearing and then reading a lot of other schools, like, the schools in northern Wisconsin that are running into this are actually closing for the week of Thanksgiving and then the week after to buffer after Thanksgiving, everybody getting together. Other schools are going virtual, some are going to more hybrid. Are we still feeling pretty, pretty good?
We are. We are, we're really committed to every day we can be in person is a win. So we know, we're well aware of other districts being proactive, you know, so to speak, and what's, what's the right answer and what's proactive enough? I don't know. But yeah, we're, we're talking about it more tomorrow at our admin meeting. We've, we've got options, but yeah, we, we right now are just trying to stay open every day that we can, and it's just, it's just, it's such a community spread right now, there's no predicting it. It's just, it's been cyclical, as you know. First, it seemed to be the high school, then the, then the middle school, then the elementary, and it's just, we got amazing staff that want to stay open, and, and we feel that's what's best for kids. And if we have to take these two-week closures, we think that's better than, again, upsetting a whole schedule of families and hybrids and things like that. So, right now, we're just trying to stay the course, and that's our philosophy right now. But again, we're revisiting it with, with our head nurse and looking at statistics and data and all things tomorrow again. It's almost a weekly thing.
Any other business that we have to handle? Any other questions by board members?
Go to bed, Tim.
Yeah, the only thing would be maybe be a little proactive with this, just because there's lots of rumors going around. I mean, I had a lot of stuff, not that you have to, but I had a lot of techs trying to find out because they heard we were going virtual and there was a meeting about it. Then I heard our meeting tonight was centered around it and all this stuff, I'm like, no, that's nothing that I'm aware of. I don't know of any conversations like that. But I don't, maybe just even a short note would help with that, but then I don't know if it'll help or people would just dismiss it.
Yeah, I'm not even sure where that rumor would have started about any meeting about going virtual. I mean, it's honestly ongoing with our CISA superintendents, our county meeting every Monday, our area superintendents, our admin meeting. I mean, it's an ongoing conversation, but I'll tell you what, it's ongoing every weekend. There, there are no weekends off for the admin team, I know that, and, and the, the health staff consistently communicating, and Sundays seem to be our busiest day, I don't know what it is, but, you know, COVID doesn't stop. And then Mondays with the county meeting, that's their busiest day, the weekend too. Yeah, I don't know. I'm not sure where that rumor would have started.
There's a bunch of people that wouldn't have thought I would have even been getting it from.
Yeah, and I, and I, I get the point about proactive communication, but one thing I've learned is anytime you try to be proactive, that's, people read into that too. I don't know.
Okay. There are no other business, then we have the important.
Doing what you guys are doing.
And we have important upcoming dates, they're listed here. I don't know if there's any question. I think the only thing that I've noted at this time is there will be no meeting on the first Monday of December. We will follow that up with a regular board meeting on the second Monday, and then we will be off, should have no more meetings until first part of January, so.
Yeah, no, no board meeting in, for a month, we get three weeks off.
So.
Hopefully, fingers crossed.
With that, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, David.
Move.
Second, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Stay healthy.
Okay.
Get healthy, Tim.
I know they talk about Mr. Weisler up at.